You're you're worse than him.
But realistically.
He was only driving over his.
I was finding the sleeper somewhere out in Williston.
But, you know, we're looking at a four hundred dollar tablet which for tablets really isn't that bad. You know, for I mean even like. So, but, you know, I did include cases and stuff, so when you guys are carrying them around, at least they have some protection. I don't know if it's obviously a risk to be taken the fact that, you know, if we're looking at ten tablets and we each have a somebody, you know, we got a thirty dollar service agreement every year on whatever, I mean, the chances of us actually happening, we could actually, I mean.
Replace it.
Turn it over, replace one that gets broke. And I I I that's up to you, I mean, that's my opinion.
I'm sure there's some kind of a warranty, there's probably a year warranty.
I'm sure there is a warranty on them.
But I don't think for damage.
No, not a damage.
Right, right.
Guess what, even whatever service agreement is gonna cover it yet, drop and break it anyway, so.
Have to have some type of accident insurance or something, yeah.
What about the issue of security or anything like that, what if there's, you know, we have a call as meeting, we have personnel negotiations, we have things going on? You know, what happens if something like that would?
I think that when we get to that type of thing, and I was kinda thinking of that a little bit too, Matt, when we get to that type of thing, those are things that uh we would definitely want to do a hard copy paper on because that would basically go from our per privacy data officer who just got, the council would be privy to that, and that would go directly into personnel files from there, so that's something I don't think we want floating around out there.
Yeah.
I understand.
Um, it's it's really not. Those type of meetings really don't have a lot of uh.
Paper.
We don't have a bunch of papers.
How many meetings, how many loads do we have?
So, I mean, it's really, yeah, and I think it would be better just to.
The ones we've had over the past eight, ten years, as long as their attorney is here, and he's usually got the one copy of whatever it is. It's either it goes from the attorney to Scott and it goes in the file and it's done.
And other business offices that are all paperless, that is something they do via paper, they don't do that on the electronic system and they, so.
One thing to note too is.
I think that would be no different, I would think.
As we're working as, you know, I mean, just working with different cities and Little Falls is potentially where I know Rising, Rotten and Uppsala are working on it, um. Kind of that green city theme, um, I guess not really a theme, but there's there's a number of different steps and we're just breaking into that now. Um, that categorize us in regards to how we're becoming a green city and being more energy efficient, you know, with with uh energy insights and with this or um, there's a a whole bunch of things that we qualify already for, um, and I think it's important to keep continuing those steps because then we can be labeled as a green city as those things are included. Grants that are available and just the simple fact that you can be labeled, um, there's different labels, you know, like, for example, Yellow Ribbon City or Yellow Ribbon City. You know, there's different steps and then we qualify for certain different, certain things that give us a lot of potential for future opportunities and so, um, it does play a big factor towards that. So, I will put that in your hands to.
Yes, we need a motion if we are looking to move forward with this.
I make a motion, we go ahead and approve Scott to move forward with his proposal on the tablets.
And I will second that.
On the floor by, definitely, and seconded by Donnie, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Uh, yeah, I think I think it's gonna be a good deal if we can save money in the long run, great.
And once again, please give me some time to get that together.
No, no.
Yeah.
Just just to start on it, yeah. Yeah.
You're gonna have to set it up so I can do it prior.
It's gonna take some, a couple months on alert.
And then, just to touch back on that, I will probably look into different funds or accounts, um, where that would be available. And then I'll, and then the next, as far as where we wanna remove that from.
Hopefully the money.
Where the money will come from.
And then that would include supervisors as well, too, correct?
That's for the ten, that's for the ten.
Okay.
What Scott recommended was the ten.
Very good.
Okay.
Um, printer copy or approval, I can have their stuff. Well, we did have, um, um, this was budgeted for this upcoming two thousand fifteen, um. I, every year, I believe Anna was budgeting for this and I did budget an additional five grand for this, um, coming in two thousand fifteen. Um, I think Matt is familiar, Bob's obviously familiar, Eric would be familiar that. I think the bearings are going out with the different deals that bring up the paper and run it through and it jams on a consistent basis, um, especially when we're doing console packets. Um, it it just has been having issues and it, it's just like your phone, just before something's up for an update, your phone usually breaks down, it just seems like this is the same thing. I really don't have a problem if you guys wanna wait until the actual two thousand fifteen, um, but as as far as a time saver and I I guess, once again, that's in your hands, you guys need to make that decision.
Scott, did you get any votes on maybe this one overhauled or anything or?
I I did, um, and what they would do is charge us a hundred and forty dollars for parts and labor just to look at it. And then from there, it could be a thousand dollars worth of parts, it could be another fifty, it could be, and we don't know and they don't know and they will not know until.
They actually spend money on looking.
And I did check in, um, just like I mentioned on on the, when we were talking about the paperless, um, the new printer being it, being one, the the new year, it has that eximony years for parts available, this one, the parts are not gonna be available, so. It's getting to be too old, we've had it for a number of years and like I said earlier, about five years is what we've been changing though, we're up to that, so.
Hopefully you can feel the good part for it, but it will look at.
Do you know what the copy count on the list by then?
Yeah, it's, uh.
I thought I seen that in there too, or somewhere.
You know what's happening?
Forty-five hundred. And what we did is we actually put a count on there, um, and I don't know the exact detail or everything, he just, the actual service deck or our salesman is a lot more educated in machines themselves, um, but we did count how many copies and we based that copy up of how many.
Forty-five hundred per quarter of a year.
Two thousand and four. Per quarter, yes.
Eighteen thousand?
That might be.
There's a lot of copies in here.
If we go, if we go paperless.
Yeah.
I'd say that, yeah.
Right now, we're jamming, but look at the paper you waste, because you have to be print all that stuff.
Oh, yeah. What really makes me mad is when it jams a check and then it's a check that you have to void it out and it's, that's just bad reflection on our audit because they make this missing check.
They don't like, yeah, they don't like to see that.
Yeah, no, I mean, so I try to just keep making use of it, run it through, but when it starts jamming checks and stuff, then it's kind of a hassle, but once again, I don't have a problem waiting until then, um, it's just.
What do you have left for toner for sitting here to run this thing compared to our, do the same cartridge go one day out?
No, I checked in that, you know.
Oh, they changed those.
We have a regular set of all color toner available, um, except black, so we have three other colors and it's been a while right now, but they're full. And then we're worth of all the probably two hundred and eighty bucks.
Would they give us anything?
I tried and I I really didn't answer.
Or do we, do we approve this but run the the toner down for a while and use most of the two hundred and eighty dollars of the toner off? Cause we're gonna throw the garbage otherwise.
Yeah, I don't think we throw it in the garbage.
There's places you can sell.
Will they take it on trade?
Yeah, we could probably even return it, I could, I, we could see if we could return it, it wasn't that long ago when I bought it.
That is possible.
That would be.
Yeah, I really tried getting rid of it on in that process just because.
What, that's the toner or the copier?
Toner.
Oh, the toner.
The toner. The copier would go in on trade of that, um, so. But another thing to touch on is this also had the fax unit instead of a separate fax machine, and a fax machine likes to have a man as well, um, just which is not that big a deal once again, but everything will be one unit, it'll be more efficient, um, it'll just be on the end of the machine, so.
That's the kind of, um, as we have to, we can go, you can imagine tons of copies.
I see, this is what we, is that the hospital haul our copiers or is this?
One thing that's important too is obviously for using it in their office use and stuff like that, but technically, if the community has a city, has a city appears, they do have access to it, if they wanna use it, they do pay a small fee. Um, but I think they also should have an adequate machine for them to come in and use it, they come in and use it. Especially with faxing and stuff, there is fax that comes in.
Yeah. Oh, I was just saying, that switch to his Rico and it's a very good, we run thousands of copies.
We get one of them.
How long is that budgeted for, Scott? How long, how long would it answer?
Every five years. This next one, we gotta be looking at ten, right?
We're hoping it'll last eight, he said, because if you go.
It's been every four to five years is what the the cycle has been for a new one, um, but if we can cut everything down in half.
Right.
I'm taking it.
You're gonna get a lot of.
Yeah.
And once again, we can get parts from being in, it's in the new year, parts on it will be until about ten years out, so it's efficient for us.
Okay, that's okay.
Then we can at least put an expectancy on on the machine. So, but once again, um, it does create some some jamming issues and stuff like that, but it was budgeted for two thousand fifteen, I don't have an issue waiting in two thousand fifteen, but I just wanted to bring it up.
Well, we have it in the budget, um, I think we know, pretty much now, we'll get into that in a few minutes, we're budget setting for the year for, um, I guess we need it.
We have.
Yes.
What type of, what type of service plan, I mean, is it, why for it for a year or two, I mean?
As far as a warranty on it, I don't have that information, and we can go with the service plan and that's the next page.
Okay.
Um, and that's, it's actually, it's at the bottom, a quarterly rate of sixty-three dollars, um, and they'll be on maintenance, um, Anna never had a maintenance on this one, um. As far as just the basics, I think, you know, we can figure that out, I think we can save money on that, um, but I can't obviously guarantee anything if there's something that goes wrong, um, but being it's a new machine and stuff, there really shouldn't. I don't think we need a maintenance fee on, at at least for a year, maybe we revisit this in a year and save that sixty-three dollars a quarter. Um, because it should be warranted anyway for a year, and revisit that and see.
Well, yeah, I mean, you're basically looking at two hundred and fifty dollars a year for a warranty, and then we're planning on getting seven, eight years out of this. I mean, you're really gonna wanna get into a fifteen hundred, seventeen hundred warranty plan that you might not use.
Right. Yeah, so and and for a simple fact, we had someone come over and look at it, I tried, I tried servicing this and, you know, I thought we were gonna try and get it through. It actually jammed the same day he left.
Is that why all the sneaker markets?
Purpose of him coming here, but he charged a hundred dollars to completely go through and he cleaned the rollers and stuff, I think, um, but it didn't, uh, that was a hundred dollars, so we're looking and that was, you know, that would, you could have him come here for sure another time to get that two hundred and fifty dollars per year. You know, and being it's a new machine, how much would they possibly fix on that? So, I don't, I don't think it's necessary at this point.
But is it just like on your car, if you don't take the warranty when you first buy, is it gonna go up next year if you want it?
I would assume it's gonna go up. Um, but, you know, if you look in the next page, eighty-four dollars to be a maintenance agreement on our old one, you know, and that's really not too far off, that's another additional twenty dollars, that's not bad for the number of years that are on that thing, um, so I don't think it'll be a drastic change.
If if you feel comfortable table on this, I'll.
I've been up here enough seeing that thing jam when we need stuff, I'll make a motion that we get a new printer.
Motion on the floor by Mike, get a second.
I second that.
Seconded by Matt, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Next item is our Gulf Course Dedicated Fund Transfer. What are these up there, Scott?
Uh, Dan had, um, Dan has actually placed this tiny door in the clubhouse along the river, um, everything came through Bob's lumber, um, everything was dedicated to fixing those two, um, situations in the clubhouse and we transfer that twenty percent into his dedicated fund, um, at the beginning of the year.
Okay.
Um, he would like to take sixteen twenty back out of there to pay it back.
Put it in the general fund to pay the bill.
To put it back into his account for paying for that.
The general fund back, Gulf First Fund, if you paid it out of the Gulf.
Yes, okay, so in in other words, he's using what that twenty percent dedicated fund is what we're doing it for, so he's pulling it back out, so. I guess I just need, um, permission to switch or transfer it over.
And on that, Dan did call me this afternoon, um, he couldn't make it tonight, he said, explaining this, this is just the materials uh, as of so far now, on the inside, the trim work is not done yet. And we did not, Brian Faust did not submit the labor bill yet, but he's thinking, this is the bill so far, he's confident that it's all gonna come in under two thousand bucks when all the bills are finally in, so there's two more coming yet, a labor bill and some more material for the inside, whatever they, he gets it.
Toby and I were gonna.
Well, that is a notch.
There's a notch there for the, so, it's a little bit of trim work here.
I make a motion to go ahead and transfer from the dedicated fund into the Gulf First Fund since Daniel paid for that, I'll bet already.
Motion on the floor by Stephanie.
I'll second that.
And seconded by Donnie, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Our next item on our agenda, one of our addition items, and that is our budget levy for two thousand fifteen. I guess first of all, I'd like to say thank you to all the department heads and to the council, um, for being able to work within our budget. You guys are all very responsible, um, spending city money and, um, it's it's greatly appreciated, I'm proud of of all the council members and, um, our department heads for for being able to do what we've been able to do over the last seven years.
And I think Scott has done a good job with.
Yes.
Figuring this out and answering the questions we had and.
Yes.
Linda and, you know, I mean, it's a first round for for them.
Yep.
I don't think they knew much of that.
They have no attending job preparing everything for us, so we have a good understanding of what we're talking about, um. Right now, the council is looking or proposing to do a zero percent increase, um, in our budget again this year. Um, which means a zero percent increase in our levy once again this year, so, um. Like I said, uh, thank you guys and I think we need to bring this to a vote. So we'll be looking for a motion to keep the budget.
There's one correction we need to make, need to change the Robert Mark Avenue Fund to the Capital Improvements Fund, uh, so.
That's a line item.
Approval upon that one.
Yeah, that that will. That will line that up, yeah. Yep. Do we have to have a separate motion for that line item approval?
It's just on the actual budget, it, no.
I just hope we do, it's just a line item, um, switch, a little button. I make a motion to approve a zero percent levy increase. There's a motion on the floor by Matt. Get a second.
I heard you going, I'll second it. I'm listening here.
Motion on the floor by Matt, seconded by Stephanie, I'd like to have a roll call vote, please.
Aye.
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 Stephanie, I myself, motion carried unanimously, thank all of you once again for being very responsible, greatly appreciated. Garbage cans, what did we have on garbage cans?
Um, I had a request, someone called in, they're looking for garbage cans, um, to be within this city, um, yes, there are other cities that have.
Tell me it wasn't my way.
No, there are other cities that obviously have garbage cans, um, but it's very likely.
And she made this remark.
But from my point of view, um, I think I would rather feel more comfortable asking Bob or have you guys ask Bob if it if he thinks that it would be a good, I mean, we don't ever have any trash or anything on the streets, um.
What's what's important?
Cause people want garbage.
I said they're on the.
And there's never, I mean, we've never had an issue with garbage, I talked to Eric about, there's never issue with garbage, um, so that's why I think Bob's opinion will be more important here.
When you're doing the streets. When you're doing the street sweeping, is there a lot?
There isn't a lot, I sweep Main Street every other week, every other Friday I sweep Main Streets, basically cigarette butts, a little bit of trash, but I mean, as a decorative thing, it may look nice, I mean, that would be my only thing, I mean.
Then you've got, you know, then you gotta make sure somebody gets some emptied in a timely fashion so that you don't get ricky. It, my my opinion is if we do decide to do it, then we need to make a match, the flower boxes that we had built.
You know, and I guess maybe my opinion too is if we, you know, cause it just by, I didn't have much time to research this, but these cans are anywhere from three hundred to a thousand dollars per can, um, and then once we start talking about decorative, you know, we might wanna put city appears or something on them. That will add up fast plus then the shipping, um, but I guess my point of view, I think it came from a member of the commercial club and maybe to help, in Bob's standpoint, you know, maybe the commercial club has business owners on the front street, can empty the garbages to help minimize Bob's time.
Kind of a problem labor wise on it.
More tipping fees and everything, right?
How much, yeah.
Well, yeah, we're gonna, yes.
It's gonna cost somebody then, pay to empty it.
Correct, yeah.
How much did, you know, cause didn't we have the school, did we have the school make those planter boxes, the the shop class, so how much did?
Yeah.
Cause we paid for the materials, how much did that? I don't remember how much that was.
I can look that, I don't remember. Fifty dollars, maybe it wasn't that much.
Did, and we just did it that way? Then you're gonna put the garbage can inside it and everything else.
But I I think one thing too is, we need to make sure that people aren't carrying them around and putting them in different locations and moving them around and.
I'd even, I know the bench, that's the thing.
Well, that people try to shove household garbage in them.
Yeah, you're inviting, you're opening up a door for a lot of other things that happen, I know it will happen.
Right.
And that will happen.
And and once again, I I go back to Bob, who'd never had an issue before and the streets are clean and I think the businesses do a good job of cleaning up their fronts, um.
Yeah.
So, I I guess that's my opinion, um, but like I said, there's, I haven't had too much time to research the actual cans and the the actual we use, what we're looking at or what we wanna look at, whether they're concrete or, um, so they have, I do want cigarette butt. All the, all the time, or, you know.
I think for right now, I I'm looking to table it until we can figure out whether there's a big enough need to invest in it, where the money's gonna come from. Not to purchase it, I mean, the city could, you know, in our garbage fund, I'm not sure, that kind of, that kind of thing, but, you know, we can pay to haul the garbage away, I mean, you know, right now, our garbage fund is doing okay, but is it gonna be able to absorb?
Was it more?
I think that it would, but the thing that you have to ask yourself is are we looking for aesthetics, the way that something's gonna look and the way somebody's gonna pre, uh, perceive the way a sidewalk looks, or are we looking for functionality? Like, I bike around town a lot, there's rarely garbage laying around on any street, whether that's because of the lack of people throwing garbage or it's because Bob's doing a good job picking the streets up all the time.
I guess my question, my question to this.
I don't know, I don't think there's really any need, but.
But my question to the commercial club person or people that brought it up, is it specific to be around all the time or is it because of like the once a month car event, so?
It's these events.
That's when they're looking for the garbage cans, they're not looking at for all year round, they're looking at it when.
And I think, you know, you know, like with the cones, I mean, I think we could find some very reusable cans and put them out, have volunteers put them out.
We have extra cans.
We have the regular city cans that the residents have, extra cans we can set out.
And we could just set them out, you know.
For the car night or for.
Or Oktoberfest.
Would that be, I just would say that. Twenty years for Oktoberfest would be set out.
It goes down to the common courtesy in our town that people pick up their stuff and they leave, too, I know, I mean, you really don't have, I mean, to a certain extent, there's some, but.
Cause the other thing they do like for big events like that is they have those big, they always remind me of those big barrels, you know, they're more of a cardboard, you know, that are more of a tempered garbage can with the big liner for it, that they put out for events that are, you know, taken away again. That aren't, I'm guessing, very expensive.
Like those fifty-five gallon cardboard ones.
Those big, you know. If you've ever been to theirs in Crasher, it looks like a big cardboard cylinder.
Yep, yep.
You know what I mean, but if that's what they're looking for is those specific events rather than tying up full time.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know, Stephanie, you live on Main Street, I live on Main Street and.
I don't.
I bug three times a year.
I always want a beer bottle in my yard.
I get a beer bottle, I'm not in the front yard or a pop camp, whoopee.
I do, I think we all do.
Yeah, so you pick it up, whoopee. And I don't think by having a receptacle anywhere on Main Street's gonna make that a big, you know, make that a difference.
It's not gonna make it any different.
The difference would be that it's the parade, for example, if we put some out because of, oh, it's not for the people at the parade, it's for everybody else that comes there.
That's sitting and watching.
And drinking beer in somebody's yard or eating a sandwich and then leave the wrapper there, they might see a garbage can and put it in.
And I don't even see it as as in the people's yards during the parade, I see it as, you know, they all line up on the parking lot, they all line up on Main Street in front of the businesses, you know.
That's where for one day thing.
You know, that more.
For that one day thing, we got the extra part, so we throw some off.
For the one thing too, I mean, if you look at the different events and how, like, at the ballroom, they always have, they put their cans out there and things like that, I mean, there's, there's always a process of how things are cleaned up and down, I thought, I don't think it's too big of an issue, but if there are, if this is something that we would look with, I just, I, my opinion, I guess, would be, you know, Bob and I spoke briefly, you know, maybe one doubt, like, here's who this town won, right over here by the library, um, you know, two or three, I think, would be adequate.
Unless it's an aesthetics thing, you know, if you get something that looks real nice and you put flower pots around it or a nice bench, you know, then it would be cool.
Yeah.
Just be an extra attraction over here where you have extra sidewalks, but.
And I do agree with, you know, like, the benches and the flower pots, I mean, we get at least a comment every couple days in regards to how nice that looks, just with that little addition.
Well, I don't know, but instead of trying to figure this out tonight, I know we have a, we have, um, more of an agenda to go through, we don't have a meeting directly after this one, so if it's okay with the council, I would like to, uh, see if we can table this and maybe tell them that. We get a motion.
I'd make a motion to table.
Second.
The waste receptacle for by Matt, seconded by Donnie, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Uh, we have some department reports, uh, Bobby, hold, how it works.
Just wanted to give an update on the electronic, electric transformer storage. A few months ago, Crowe Power no longer handle our transformers when they're taken out of service, so up at the city shop, we have a, basically a stock tank that's spill proof.
Yep.
We put, uh, floor dry on the bottom of that, so that's all set up for storing our transformers when they're taken out of service. They're put into that and within thirty days, we have to take a sample on to see if there's PCBs in it, if they're a certain level, if it's above fifty parts per gallon, they have to be handled separately, so.
Good.
Make contact with, uh, Transformer Company out of South Dakota, they take care of city out in Alexandria, so they're within every two weeks or three weeks they're in the area anyway, so.
Both of those.
Except for Coleman South Dakota.
I drive by there all the time.
Maybe you could just drop it off, Mike.
No, I don't know, they're like a haul of it.
Put it in the cab with it.
Waste of money here, Mike's going that way.
Put it in the cab with Mike, we're all good.
If you're glowing when you get home. If you're glowing when you get home.
Yeah.
Well, probably Scott can definitely.
Many of our transformers are PCB free, but there is some.
I know we still have.
We got a couple of ones of, of the system. And it's not, they don't care, it's their PCBs and they're all the system used, it's just when they're taken out of service, they need to be handled. That documented, this company handles them right now, the recycling and this whole thing, so the oil spread, it's kind of a land thing, so. And then, uh.
Do we have to go with a contract with them at all, or would this be through Minnesota Power or anything, or?
No, not through Minnesota Power, they don't hire anything with that transformer, because one of the transformer has a serial number on it, that serial number cares to like to.
It's both ways.
So, you know, the research I've done, they recommend that you just, once a transformer was bad, just junk it out, you know, get thirty dollars for the transformer, if it's not worth sending it to a rebuilt company, selling it to them, and then they put, who knows what oil in it, and then a spill happens ten years from now and you're still responsible
for that transformer, so. Makes sense.
Just junk them all and be done with them, so.
Good. Um, do you need any type of special approval for that?
Uh, we had an electrical outage during that last lightning storm, two, three weeks ago, and, uh, Crowe Power got hit pretty bad up north, so they had all their crew up there. Had to call Minnesota Power and they were actually in the area, so they were able to respond. And probably six to eight hours passed from the crowing, couldn't even get there, so I just had to handle that outage, so, I mean, it's kind of my first experience with them, so.
How'd everything go?
It went well, we lost the transformer from lightning and we just took on the crowings, um, and storage there, so. One thing, and we'll work on the logistics, but we'd probably be beneficial to carry a ten K V, twenty-five K V right at our shop, so.
Stop, stop, grab it.
They don't carry them. They don't carry them on their trucks, so.
It's a good idea.
That's what they recommend going.
Or will Crowing, will it just keep going in their stockpile?
Yeah, let's just keep going in their stockpile.
An emergency situation, I would ask.
Yeah, I would share these. Yeah, I think it would be good, but it'd get bored.
Then we started paying fire hydrants today, actually, so.
Crosswalks, do you still get temps to serve to do that?
No, actually, last year I had a company, uh, pillager, you know. I, uh, priced it out and throw up a charge.
Really?
I remember that.
You know, I, I actually rented a sprayer from San Juan for two years and did it, and by the time you got down there, cleaning the sprayer for three dollars.
Tight.
Tight and everything else, so. So they actually came and did the curbs also, they've bowled the curbs this year, and then I'm waiting for that chip to get done.
And I won't do the crosswalks either.
Good.
All right, I think.
Thanks, Bob.
Scott, did you have anything additional you'd like to?
Everything is pretty much on the agenda, both of them.
Okay.
I'll just sweep for Daniel on his phone call too, we talked at the last park board meeting. Um. Bids for the bridge recovery, um, he is, he said, uh, who's calling, Bob's over here, uh.
Sit call, Paul.
Paul.
Yep.
Is gonna work, he's trying to get a couple more, we only have one person, I think, that even looked at the blueprint yet, so we have no bids on labor yet. But he was, uh, Daniel said that, uh, Paul was working on getting more bids on that, Tri-City was out yesterday or today, today.
Look at, look at the rest of that.
We're looking at some paving for, uh, golf cart paths, uh, across the bridge.
I've got a lead over there.
Yeah, somewhere along there. Anyway, they were out, but we don't have a bid yet, but the process is going, and oh, we had a park board meeting last Monday night. I mean, this is something that we would like Tri-City to put the bid in and possibly get that done before the bridge construction starts.
Yeah, and it, I mean, we've been trying to offer to all the local contractors, um, so hopefully we have one of those folks step up and, and want a bid. I'd like to, I'd like to definitely offer to those, our local folks first, and if, uh, they're too busy, uh, which they are extremely busy right now, so that's a good thing. So, we'll just keep working and try and get it done, so sometime after Labor Day, we can start with it.
That's all then, I really have, just a thing to go on for this.
Yep. Treasurers report.
The closing balance on July thirty-first, balanced with the statement is seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty-four cents.
Anything else, we'll have Linda.
Nope, I don't have any use.
Looking for a motion to approve the treasurer's report.
I'll make that motion.
Motion on the floor by Mike, Mike second, uh, second by Matt, all those in favor, please, second by, by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Claims?
We got some claims.
Yeah, I didn't do coffee.
The printer copy jam.
I know, I know, seeing how we had our little tablet, we could.
We'll just go and put some more sneaker marks on the front of the copy and wait. Give it a couple more kicks, I've seen you kicking that thing before. You might have.
I apologize, I think I did. I think I did.
Here.
I screwed up on this.
That does.
They're not, uh, I picked it off the line, I just don't know where. Um, I will walk you up to you. You haven't told for a month for the claims, so we could approve that.
There's somewhere.
Right here, left way, please.
You first told me you'd do this here.
That's great.
Poof, and it's gone.
See, when we have our tablets, guys, this won't be a problem. Speed run, don't lose it. Read faster.
Okay. These pages are all been approved already, so if they have a mark on them, first ones.
Racers, real?
Dressers.
Dressers, okay. Hey, where am I now?
Sorry about that, guys.
Like another man. I make a motion, we pay the bills when you guys get on, you can decide.
I didn't even say the food, is there, is there a couple in between? Yeah. It's like, uh, you're gonna wait and charge over there sometimes. Yep.
Toby, aren't you gonna let the other two look out?
Yeah, can you pass them down?
That's kind of what they're doing.
I just, I just wanna see them, so.
That one's looking over.
I just know that.
I'm like, pass it to me now. Uh, one at a time, guys.